Six Street.
Esther, I'm sorry, can you repeat your last name?
Denton, D-E-N-T-O-N.
Thank you.
Okay. I want to know who is responsible for the corner of Canton and Sixth Street stop sign that was put on the lamppost where more than 50% of the people run it every day? And I'd like to know who's responsible for the weed patches at the Dakota Mart gas station and the highway cottages, because I've got to look at those every day. And last is, who's responsible for the six beautiful street lamps on Canton and 385 that don't work?
Um, I'm sorry, I tried to get all the, but the wheat.
The weed.
Weed, weed. All these weeds growing.
And then those two locations, please?
Yes, Dakota Mart gas station and the highway cottages. Those are the cottages.
That is. And then who's responsible for the five streetlights that are on where?
Six, yeah, six of them, right there on Sixth Street and 385.
Thanks.
I talked to Monty from DOT and he told me that he didn't know, so.
Not ignoring you, I'm writing down to make sure I got all your questions. Stop sign at Canton and Sixth, are you concerned that there's one there or just the location of it?
The location is actually on the, on the street lamp.
Yep.
It's on a regular pole. And I know that, I believe the tree is on the easement, so as traffic comes through, they just flip through. In the wintertime, this last winter, they were not stopping and they turned right and they would spin. So luckily, no one got hit, but that's one of the things, they cannot see that stop sign.
Okay. So you're okay with, you're okay with the stop sign being there, you just want it more visible?
Yeah, and if they could put a pole next to it, it's a little bit closer to the street where they can see it, something, yeah, a pole there is fine.
Okay. Then you were talking about the weeds on the other side of the intersection. The person that would be responsible for those would be the property owners? So we'll follow up with that. And then you said six lights, streetlights?
Yeah, those big, pretty lights that they put up, they worked, I think, a couple of times, and they haven't been on a long time.
Okay.
When they, the last time they were on.
Are those around the new island thing?
Yeah, those black, they're really pretty.
Yeah.
They, they are, and I asked from DOT and they said they didn't know.
Okay.
Because do they turn on every night? If they started to, then they go on and off, and now they just don't even turn on.
Okay, so Deborah was asking about the new lights, did I understand you to say black lights?
No, they're black lamps.
There are old.
The old streetlights?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So I know who to ask about those, so we'll talk with the street folks and see what's going on there.
Yeah, I noticed that they worked and then they didn't, so I just thought, well, maybe the electricians haven't finished something, so I didn't say anything either. My bad.
Did we answer your questions?
Yes.
All right.
Are you gonna find the answer? How do you follow up with you? Have you followed? Yeah, after you've paid five minutes, should the question be asked, will you call City Hall or shall we call?
Call me.
If you'd like to share your phone number with me. I'll make sure to share it with Mayor.
Gary tried to get me to talk to you, so I want you to be aware of that in case y'all want something to talk about after the meeting.
You asked me if I'd seen Larry driving by, like, he would honk the horn and I would wait. Haven't seen him. Maybe they moved you on a different.
No, I'm just trying to show support for Gary here.
Thank you, Esther.
Thank you, Esther.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anyone else? Esther showed you how to do it, just come on down. Onto council updates, Executive Director Andrea Wishedco.
Good evening, Mayor. City Council, can you hear me? A little louder. Hello? Louder.
I can hear you just fine.
Can you?
I think I can.
Can you focus on the audience here?
Yeah. Okay. I'll try to get as close as I can. This will be the quarterly report for June, July, and August. ICOR, I participated in a regional accelerator program as a mentor for a new business startup which focused on customer discovery. The program was a five-week course with three- to four-hour learning sessions and office meetings with an advisor, as well as extensive homework and a final presentation. The client that I've been working with knocked the whole thing out of the ballpark. I've received word that there's more funding available for further customer discovery and we met on August 14th with Beth Lamba. She's the Associate Vice President for Research, Innovation, and Entrepreneurship from South Dakota School of Mines and Technology. We met with her to strategize research partners for this project. Building One and Castle Manor, I've met with three developers to show Building One and Castle Manor over the summer months, and I've also sent the floor plans, plat, and our housing study to those interested parties, so I am trying to keep the interest up about our vacant buildings. Engage South Dakota. South Dakota News Watch and the Cheeseman Center for Democracy have partnered to examine significant issues for communities across South Dakota. They chose two communities, Watertown and Hot Springs, for their pilot project. This Cheeseman Center is designing a survey to be released to Hot Springs residents in the fall of '24 to learn where our primary issues are. I will be having a remote meeting with the group on August 20th, the group of organizers, not the residents. And South Dakota News Watch plans to be here the week of October 10th for pre-planning. Rushmore Region Alliance Education Roundtable. In lieu of our bi-monthly meeting on September 5th, the Rushmore Region Alliance is going to host a roundtable for higher education institutions to learn what each is doing to address our workforce needs in the area. The School of Mines, Western Dakota Tech, Black Hills State, and Shatter State have all been invited to this roundtable. Western Dakota Board of Retreat. The retreat was held on July 19th facilitated by ACCT Consultant Ken Foley. We covered seven different topics, I won't bore you with them, but they're in the report, and the retreat resulted in four pages of action items. Western Dakota Tech applied for a rural development grant to become a hub for registered apprenticeship cooperatives in the Black Hills area. They did not receive the grant this round, they're going to reapply, but I will pursue the program at the local level with our school districts, as well as set up facilitation of the Build Dakota Scholarship applications for seniors. Fall is the time to begin work on these programs with the school districts. Historic Preservation. I submitted a memo of notification that was requested from Bob Jr. about a month ago. It entails our efforts to assist in refurbishing and maintaining our historic downtown sandstone structures. There were many questions that I had to leave blank, such as what buildings we need to come down and what order and in what year if we cannot find appropriate funding. Bob Nelson Jr. is working to fill in the blanks on that letter. I'm currently helping a resident owner of one of our downtown buildings submit an application for the Out of Deadwood Grant Fund, which the next cycle comes due in January of '25. FAA Report and Business Park Progress. GOED Designation. I met with the Airport Committee and members of Hot Springs City Council to discuss the results of the FAA findings of how the city acquired the property for the airport. The property was part of a land trade, so the Farm Security Administration could complete a project they were working on. Brian Shook with FAA sent an email to this effect and stated that the team believes, so far, that the release of the property can be handled as if the land was acquired with local funds rather than a federal obligation. This means we wouldn't have to go through any of their federal reviews, the NEPA reviews, the ARC reviews, those kinds of things that are quite time-consuming. Mayor Nelson has sent the list of restrictions to their lawyers. A review and a decision will need to be made as to whether the restrictions would be released. This will be up to City Council. I will attend an in-depth training session on land acquisition and business park development on August 27th and 29th, through the 29th, sorry. On August 9th, I was informed by Jennifer Seitzma, Director of West River Planning, that Hot Springs was chosen by GOED as one of 17 designated high-impact economic development locations with a goal of creating a business park, so that dovetails quite nicely. Mayor Bob Nelson, City Councilman Bill Lukens, and I attended an informational session on August 16th to learn more about what this designation means. Energize Report. The data from the final report was very positive, positive with the exception of a few complaints about the distances that residents had to walk. Forty-nine of the 141 attendees said that they were going to stay an extra night, so that was a third. Several people said they were going to bring their families back for a vacation, so that was really good news. The final expenditures during the conference, I want you to know that these are margin-of-error numbers, so they're a span of numbers, so for food and drinks, $3,822 to $5,109. I'm gonna skip, I've got the whole list of everything, but I'm gonna skip through that.
Do you need to have your full question shared?
Sure, absolutely. The total of expenditures while the registrants were here is between $34,888 and $50,564. That spread accounts for a margin of error. We don't know an exact total because these are estimated based on actual spending of those who completed the survey and then averaged out among all of the attendees. That number doesn't include what we paid for food, for meals, and breaks during the conference. That includes $2,055 to Wanderin Bison, $509 to Two Cows Creamery, $2,300 to Smoking Mexican, $665 to Dave the Superfood Truck, $1,330 to the Chamber for the extensions, half of the Chamber bucks, and that total amounts to $5,529.64. Those are actual dollars spent. So if I take out the margin of error between the total number, $34,888 to $50,564, what the report showed with that amount, $5,529, was $48,255.64. Now that is of the people who reported. That's the actual number that they got before they factored in the margin of error. Any questions about that?
And that was just for two days' worth of conference?
That was less, that was 26 hours.
Twenty-six hours.
Yeah, not two days. Remote Women's Group. In late spring, I formed a masterminds group for female workers with remote positions. We've met five times over the summer and we've helped each other work through some of the barriers and challenges of working at distance from other employees and offices. Will also be exploring the possibility of a local project. Health Conference. I've applied for a scholarship to cover the costs of travel and hotel for the Creating Healthy and Wealthy Communities Workshop on October 1 and 2 presented by the South Dakota Department of Health. I think that's everything. All the big stuff. Any questions about any of that?
I just want to say thank you, Andrea. Given the size of the city staff and the already very significant workload, I don't see how we could do what you're doing with our existing staffing, so thank you for, for being a part.
Thank you.
Did you mention Castle Manor as one of the properties?
I did, I did.
And also include the hospital part, the old hospital in addition to the Castle Manor.
Yes, the old hospital, not just the Castle Manor.
Right.
And then Building One is up at the state, that's home.
Yeah, and we talked about that before.
It's a fantastic building, I would love to find someone to convert it into apartments.
Andrea, recently in the news, it talked about $30 million being brought to the Black Hills and Hot Springs being one of the recipients of some of the funding for housing. Can you enlighten us on that?
I can't. So Black Hills Area Community Foundation approached us about forming a housing committee, and it's been over a year ago, it was in the fall of '23, and we were the first group to complete it. And they had not applied, Black Hills Community Area Foundation had not applied for 30 million in federal funding yet. They did this with the help of Senator Rounds. They got the funding on the first try. The funds will be used for low-interest loans for developers to do housing, and the housing has to be for folks who are 80% of AMI. And AMI is a funny, funny number, because 80% of AMI for one single person in Far River County is about $50,000. For two people, it's about $57,000. For three, it's about $62,000. So if you have kids, you get about $6,000 more accredited, so it really diminishes as the number of people in your household goes up. So it's, it'll be interesting how it's utilized, but we decided as a committee, as a housing committee, to go ahead and participate in the event that we would need it in the future, we at least wanted to have a place at the table.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
It sure did, thank you very much.
Andrea, so we were just talking about getting funding and grants, how come we don't have private investors? How come we don't have real estate moguls coming in and looking to develop on their own? Why do we have to rely on government funding?
Can you be, can you elaborate? I don't understand what you're asking.
Are we, are we friendly to entrepreneurs? Are we friendly to business people? How come we, why do we have to rely on grants for housing? Why can't we get, you know, just regular developers coming in and buying land and dividing it and building? I just wanted, do you know why? Any insights on that?
I can speculate.
Okay.
Okay. And that's not a grant, that was a loan.
Okay.
The state loves loans.
Right.
And they like 50 bachelor loans, too. So one of the developers that I had come and looked at Building One and Castle Manor works for a company that's in Rapid, in Sioux Falls, in Minnesota and Wisconsin, and he told me that labor and materials costs are 30% higher in Rapid City, in the hills, than they are in those other two states and the eastern part of South Dakota. I know that's not a complete answer.
Right. Okay, so it's just, it's just a little more expensive to do everything here in the Black Hills?
Yes.
Okay.
It is. And refurbishing a building has its own set of, I'm sure you know, issues.
Right. Okay. Are there any, any prospects for manufacturing, technology, anything that like pays a, like wages for a family to afford to live here, like a family?
There are, and the issue will be finding a place to put them and building the infrastructure and capacity for any of those companies who would like to come here. I get RFIs, requests for information, on a monthly basis, sometimes several a week, it just depends on the year. And one of the things that I find interesting that people don't know about Hot Springs and Far River County, they always want to be within 10 miles of I-90. Well, guess what? 79 is a superhighway, too. You can access that thing with a double, semi, anything you want, but people just don't know it, so they never request that in their RFIs. And that's probably something that we need to rectify, and I think that was part of the reason we were included in the 17 communities as a potential high-impact economic development area, because they came down and saw what we had in terms of transportation options. And we also have a railroad that runs, two, two railroads. So it's a matter of making the investment on the front end to host those people, and I don't mean through incentives. I just mean being able to house the business, being able to house the manufacturing operation or the research operation. We don't have that capacity, yet.
All right, okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Several things, Andrea. Building One, and we've been talking about it for a while, and the folks that initially put together a great plan, financing was a problem for them. Are they kind of out of the picture anymore?
No, not necessarily. Those folks have a deep love for that building, and they're hoping that the interest rates go down.
Still the financing with them, then?
Yeah, it's still a financing issue.
Okay. The airport property that you talked a little bit about, FAA and everything, we need to sit down and have a little more detailed conversation about that.
Yes.
And then the Energize Conference, I appreciate you sharing the dollar figures for our budget meetings. I did share with council the email that Rachel, I believe, sent out?
Mm-hmm.
So they were aware of some of that information, but for you to share it publicly, that $48,000 came into the community with a two-day conference, and all of that was possible by council. Thank you for making the Mueller Center available at no cost.
And I, yes, thank you, and thank you to all the city council members who helped me bring that together. It was really very easy and fluid and went quite smoothly, so.
So she says.
I'd do it again.
She makes it look easy.
And we had many, many compliments on our town, on the Mueller Center, people were shocked, a town the size of 3,800, whatever we are right now, has a facility that can handle this many people in seats with a theater venue like this. There was nothing but compliments for Hot Springs. We, we underestimate ourselves.
And that was in the midst of all of the construction as well?
Yes, yes.
Again, thank you. You're the reason that Energize Conference came to Hot Springs, and thank you, council, again for recognizing that it was a good thing to do.
Yes.
To make the Mueller Center available to have that many people come in.
I really appreciate it, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything you do, Andrea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve Personnel Actions A through G?
I make a motion to approve Personnel Actions A through G.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Can I get a motion for New Business Item A, a motion to approve a contract, or Contract 2024-11 between Evans Plunge Mineral Springs and Laura Barner?
I'll make a motion to approve Contract 2024-11 between Evans Plunge Mineral Springs and Laura Barner for fitness instruction at the Evans Plunge EPMS facility, September 2024, May 2025.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Can I get a motion for New Business Item B, approve and authorize the mayor to sign Amendment Number Two?
Make a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign Amendment Number Two to the AES, I'm sorry, AE2S Water Master Plan Update Agreement, first approved by council on 11/18/21. Original agreement, $15,800. First Amendment, $17,740. Second Amendment, $18,000. New adjusted agreement amount, $51,540 to be spent, I'm sorry, to be paid by future supplemental appropriation from water funds, services, and fees, 602-43350-42200.
Second.
Discussion.
Can we get an explanation of those?
Amendments.
Amendments and how we ended up where we are? Do you have that on the top of your head? I'm sorry.
Well, looking at the paperwork that's on the agenda or in the packet, the original agreement, the amount was to, and Bill, steer me straight where I get off, was to update our water master plan initially?
Yes.
And then there was, so that original one was $15,800. There were some changes to prior amendments for $17,740.
Significant change in the plan after public hearings. So we drastically changed the plan after public hearing. On the matter of whether or not we were gonna drill a well, we changed from that to wanting to pipe.
Right, okay.
About a big change.
So this one for $18,000, you recall a couple of meetings, a number of meetings ago when council, you approved funding to do a distribution study throughout Hot Springs to make sure that we had adequate-sized lines to get water, especially to the southwest side of town where the Martin tract is being developed and ideally some homes in relation to Far River Hill system. So we're just looking at all of the distribution system and found out that we're great there. So the other side of that is, do we have capacity? Do we have the supply? And that's what this particular one is doing, is doing the necessary work to design a piping layout for Evans Well Pumping Tests. So they're gonna go in and design the necessary changes to the, to the piping out there and conduct a capacity test from the Evans Pumping Station to make sure we have enough water. And that one is going to be $18,000. What I highlighted in the, the contract and design of piping layout for Evans Well Pumping Test, provide proposals to the city of Hot Springs with AE2S's recommendations, attend a pumping test and collecting data throughout the test. That's what this particular amendment's for.
And if I recall right, or remind me if I'm right, all this started because we wanted to be able to get on the state's list for grants for the new tank to store all the water in for that part of town, right?
Well, that's certainly part of it, as far as our water master plan identifies in our current conditions, future needs.
Right. So all of this surrounds that, is what got it going.
We've known for a number of years that we need to have it updated, and we started two years ago, maybe?
Yes.
Three years ago with, with the initial conversations, and we're taking the necessary steps to get everything wrapped up.
And I guess the only thing I would either remind council or inform council is, this amendment is for AE2S's engineering work. They'll go out and they'll identify the contractors and such. This does not cover the actual contractor work that modifies the piping so that the pumping test can be conducted, so there will be another charge once they have done their work or part of their work.
So we're spending a lot of money up front just to be on the list to get grants?
And for plans, we can't build anything if we don't know what we need to build.
It's a very necessary, the water, the water master plan is, is a, is a critical document for us to, to do anything, and we have to have grants to do anything. We can't build a one or two or three-million-gallon tank on our own, so that would be mostly funded from, by grants, and so we can't even apply for those grants. mostly funded from, by grants, and so we can't even apply for those grants until this water master plan is updated. And we've got to have this information because this would likely be the water source to fill that new tank. So yes, it's, I guess it's our water reality.
Yeah, and Travis, as you were asking about, you know, why can't developers just come to Hot Springs and, you know, begin throwing up homes without grants? This is the one thing that they're asking the city about, is if we come here and we want to put up 10, 15, 20 homes in a development area, do you have the utilities necessary to support those homes? We know that sewer-wise, we're fine. We found out with the last distribution study, we're fine there. We just need to make sure that we can put enough water into the lines. This is all necessary to assure developers that if you want to come here, we can meet your needs. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Can I get a motion to approve new business item C, approve and authorize the city administrator to sign engineering services proposal?
I make a motion to approve and authorize the city administrator to sign the engineering services proposal from West Plains Engineering, Inc. to provide mechanical and electrical design services for a propane generator at the wastewater treatment facility for a fixed rate of $9,750 to be paid by future supplemental appropriation wastewater fund services and fees, 604-43250-42200.
Second. Discussion. Bill, JR, could you kind of give us an update on this, please?
Yeah, actually, these next two items, I'm going to speak to at once if I can. If you recall when the, not parish, sorry, flashback, county emergency manager has come and talked to us several times about the county pre-disaster mitigation plan. That's where a team of people go through and they identify the major hazards facing the county as a whole and communities specifically. For at least the last two of those pre-disaster mitigation plans, emergency power generation for critical facilities has been on that. And we are finally making progress on getting grants to install those generators, and so this is the first step to install an emergency backup generator for both the Hot Brook Pumping Station and the wastewater treatment facility. If you're wondering why Hot Brook versus Evans Plunge Pumping Station, Hot Brook Pumping Station actually fills the 2 million gallon tank, which can then gravity-feed the 1 million gallon tank. So if we, as a region, suffer a significant power outage, that would be the best place to have emergency power to maintain pumping capacity to keep our tanks filled. I'm looking at Misty because what I'm about to say may or may not be correct. Typically, the grants for these types of things, whether it's a Homeland Security grant or something else through the state, is typically at 90%.
I thought they were 80, 20, or 50, 50. I think it was a number.
I think they're at least 80%, and what I'm about to say, I'm kind of guessing at, is this engineering study can count as, what's the term, payment in kind or service?
Get some head contribution or percentage.
Yeah, anyway, this could go, this engineering study can probably be used as part of our percentage for the actual installation grant. That's an assumption and a guess and a hope.
Because it is just a plan.
Yeah, this is just a.
They proposed, or again, just engineering, not plants, not any.
And if I remember correctly, you are right, it is 80, 20, if I remember correctly. And so, you know, these are not cheap pieces of equipment. I wish we could go down and buy a pull-start generator with a plug-in, but this is, you know, installing new switchgear and the tanks and the foundations, and so there is a lot of engineering that goes into it.
I was concerned with how long the friends would live for, and how long we are replacing in these two funds, and they're good, not forever, I mean, it's not a lot of it, but for a long time, so if we can't get to the projects because we don't have the first round grant funding or something.